Well, you know, it's clear. Well, I'm pretty used to it. It's been a year, you know, it's been a year since I've been so many, uh, things that I don't see. And I think it's just, uh, yeah, he's given, yeah, he's given a few of the awards and things that I want to say. Uh, we've got some responses, uh, in public, I think we've got some responses, but I think it's sort of a blast. Yeah. But anyway, I don't know. I think it's happened. Yeah, it's happened. I feel like that's, uh, oh my gosh, she's got both of them. I think it's just what I'm supposed to do. Martin, they just say, how do you know they're still painting?
Oh, yeah. This guy.
Mr. Mayor, I want you to see what's happening here. We're very worried about, uh, seriously, our tennis, our tennis policy. We were thinking about that.
We'll have Dr. Woodburn to put that in his notes. Dr. Woodburn, we're gonna have time. Put in a school to find him after he's been out. Take an assessment of who here tonight will attend this.
By this time, by this time, we'll take advantage of that. We want to let it go through. Yeah, I'm afraid of dying if I don't go all that. Um, Bob, no, we're forward. This is going to be moving really quick, sir. It's going to stop, but...
And there's no, uh, gabbling up here.
We'll just knock on the desk.
We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. Uh, I want to welcome everyone who has come out tonight for the meeting and all those that'll be watching the meeting on G-ten television. I'd like to begin this evening, uh, by, uh, asking Boy Scout Troop Three-Nineteen and with their scout leader, Dr. Doug LaSane, if they'd come forward, please.
Yes.
Now, some of the, some of the, if not all of them, are working on their citizenship and community badge tonight, but they're gonna have to earn it. And they're gonna earn it by leading us all in the pledge of allegiance tonight. So if everybody would please rise.
Scout Lou, would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carter, if you'd lead us in the invocation.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks, to thank you for this beautiful day and for all your blessings upon us individually and collectively as the city of Jacksonville. We give thanks for all of our city employees who every day give their best to serve our city and its citizens, but tonight we especially give thanks for those who will be receiving the lifesaving award and for their work beyond this normal day activity in saving lives here in this city. We pray for our military members who are serving us here and around the world for their safety and their anxious families, and as always, we ask your guidance and direction to be with our mayor and council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Gentlemen, thank you very much for attending the meeting tonight and also, uh, leading us in the pledge. Thank you.
Is this thing talking?
Dr. LaSane, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Much love.
Counsel, uh, we have our agenda for tonight's meeting. I'm sure you've had time to view the agenda, and I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt that agenda.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we have an agenda. So we're gonna do some, uh, presentations now. I'm gonna come around front. We have a presentation of some lifesaving awards for tonight. I'd like to ask Chief Mike Inara from Department, Director of Public, uh, Public Safety and also Deputy Chief Sean Hayes from the Jacksonville Fire Department, if you would join me up front. Also, I'd like to ask Jacksonville Fire Emergency Services Captain Nicholas Strong, Driver Operator Two Brandy Burns, Driver Operator One Heather Sazmanic, Firefighter Two Michael Barone, Firefighter Trainee Quincy Jones, JPD Officers Thomas Madry and Kimberly Pacino. How y'all doing?
Michael. Come over, stand next to me.
On August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at approximately eight P.M., first responders from the Jacksonville Police Department and Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services responded to an emergency medical call in which a sixty-year-old man was having trouble breathing. Jacksonville Police Officers Kimberly Pacino and Thomas Madry arrived on scene. They assessed the patient, who was not breathing, and began CPR. The automatic external defibrillator, or AED, was utilized. Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services Rescue One Personnel, Driver Operator Two Brunz, and Firefighter Two Barone arrived on scene and established care. Officers Madry and Pacino operated the AED pads and Rescue One took over compression and breathing. Engine One Personnel, Captain Strong, Driver Operator One Netsnik, Firefighter Three Sazmanic, and Firefighter Trainee Jones arrived on the scene. After thirty-four minutes of CPR and advanced life support by the team, the patient began breathing on his own. Jacksonville Public Safety Personnel assisted Onslow County Emergency Medical Services with preparing the patient for transport to Onslow Memorial Hospital for treatment. The swift and immediate response of these public safety professionals resulted in reviving the victim. Their actions resulted in preventing a tragedy and are very worthy of our lifesaving award. So at this time, we'd like to present the awards. Let's see. Who we? Officer Madry. Okay. We have Captain Nicholas Strong. Driver Operator, don't see the last name. Thank you for being there, gentlemen. There's Mike over here. Mike and Roll. Let's give him a hand in recognition. Brittany, how you want him to be for the photograph?
Bring him on in.
Two lines, folks, let's go. You know the routine.
You get them all, I'll give you two lines.
I might, uh, thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward for a photo?
Family members.
Don't be too.
Anybody? Are you with a phone if you want to?
Anybody else, you're welcome. Come on down.
Sir, come up.
Come on so you can get a closer shot.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have arrived at our first section of public comment for the evening. There's no one has signed up to speak at public comment. I know sometimes we pick up the sheet, uh, sign-up sheet a little early. If anyone here wishes to speak at public comment, if so, please raise your hand.
Okay, we're gonna go on to the next thing, uh, next order of business is the adoption of minutes and consent items on tonight's agenda, and the minutes are from June four, June fourth, two thousand and nineteen, regular workshop meeting.
I'll make the motion to adopt the minutes and agenda, consent items.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna take a short break, and I know some of you came solely for the presentations tonight, and, uh, you probably don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you are certainly welcome to, but I'll give you this opportunity to, uh, uh, leave. I don't think the meeting will last very long, so...
You can go to work for IT.
Turn it off, turn it on, that's the main thing. That's your number one rule.
Counsel, we, uh, we'll go into, uh, agenda item number twelve tonight. This is a, um, Crime Commission, Governor's Crime Commission grant being sought by the police department, and let me get to this. I know that, uh, okay. I'm gonna turn this over to Mike. Go ahead.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk about, uh, the Governor's Crime Commission and this particular grant. Um, this grant is part of the JAG grant, but I think when we talk about these grants that we've talked about over the last several, uh, several months, the partnership with our, with our, uh, with the county that we have to work on the opioid crisis. You know, Jacksonville was identified as number twelve in the country for opioid abuse, so, uh, it is a, it is a real, uh, crisis in our community. I think working together, the opening of the Crisis Center, some of the other grants that we've, uh, this is just a complement to that. And just to talk a little bit about it, we, we've seen a number of deaths in our community over the last several years, and those continue to grow. I mean, when we talk about, uh, the number of opioid deaths we had, we had, uh, a sixty-nine percent increase in overdoses since two thousand and sixteen. So the number of deaths, the number of overdoses continues to climb in our community, so I think this grant is gonna help us, uh, help us address that in, uh, the city of Jacksonville. And there's, there's a lot of different reasons this has occurred. Uh, we talked about this over the last several years. A lot of it has to do with the, uh, the opioids that, uh, that were prescribed and people getting addicted and the return of heroin, the return of heroin with a vengeance in our, in our particular community, the use of fentanyl, which is a synthetic type of, of opioid. All those things are contributing to this crisis in our community right now. And I think the number of deaths from heroin and fentanyl continues to climb. It continues to climb in our community, and it continues, continues to climb in communities across the country. And we talked about that, and we also need to, to kind of emphasize that a lot of the, a lot of the things that are not related to the, to, uh, to simply these overdoses are things that the, this substance abuse is causing. This fifty-eight percent increase in, um, in child abuse and neglect, sixty-three percent increase in foster children. So in, in addition to these overdoses that are, are, um, that are devastating to our community, we have other, um, associated crimes that are associated with, uh, substance abuse that are causing issues in our community. So some of you attended, uh, the sessions that we had from TASK, Treatment Alternatives for Safe Communities, and so one of the things that we talked about is the back door to the next door. So when the Crisis Center opens, that was the first step. So one of the things that we've, we've been looking at is how do we approach, uh, the substance abuse? How do we approach those folks that are coming out of the Crisis Center when they have been through detox or they've been through several days of treatment? How can we get them into treatment? Because what we've found in, in our research is that fifty-five percent of the people that come out of a, a Crisis Center, out of a detox, will not make it to their first appointment. If we can get that fifty-five percent to, uh, to get to that first appointment and to continue, to continue that treatment, then we can, we can salvage about ten to twenty-five percent of those folks. They'll, they'll be successful in beating their addiction. So as we looked at the Crisis Center as the first step in, um, in, in this approach, now we're looking afterwards. And the TASK gave us a lot of information that we can use to determine what our best approach is. In fact, we talked about the time to treatment. If we can get them into treatment as quickly as we can after they're released from the DIX Crisis Center, then we're gonna be more successful. And our community, you know, we talked about the, the number of services that we had during that, our community has capacity. It has capacity to address some of those things. So how do we make the best use of that, that capacity? And I think that's what we're looking for when we talk about this, this grant from the Governor's Crime Commission. One of the things that we're going to do is focus on how we get those folks into the treatment once they get out of the DIX Crisis Center. So we're looking at several different things. The, uh, the peer navigator, which will, which will contact that person on a very regular basis, make sure they're getting the resources they need, and make sure they're getting to their appointments so that they can, we can follow up with that, and we can be successful for those folks to beat that addiction. The other thing I think that's, uh, that's gonna be unusual about this grant is that we're gonna be approaching it in, uh, from a child prevention standpoint. So, uh, our goal is to hire, um, or to contract with the school system to provide licensed clinical social workers that will go in and do, one, prevention programs, but also the kids that are victimized by, uh, by seeing their parents' overdose is to get them into mental health treatment, get them into mental health treatment so that we can break that addiction cycle, because a lot of times the children of people who are using or are having substance abuse grow up to abuse those substances as well. So our goal is to break that cycle in, in a long-term prevention proj, uh, um, approach, but also to approach it as, as how we, how we keep those folks engaged in their treatment and, and try to make them successful. So this is a two-year grant. It's five hundred thousand dollars, and what we'll be doing is we'll be contracting with Recovery International. They will be providing the services once that, once those folks leave the Crisis Center and following those folks for, for six months to a year to try to make sure that they're getting into treatment, make sure they're getting into housing, make sure they're finding a job, make sure they're, they're getting the life necessities that will enable them to be successful when we talk about, uh, beating those addictions. Our application is due, uh, July, um, of two thousand and nineteen, and the grant period will start January and end December two thousand and twenty-one. So I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Chief.
Just, uh, just a comment. Uh, let's, let's say this, that we are successful in obtaining this grant and, and we've got some success from the program. What do we do after the two years?
You know, that's a, that's a great question, and I think one of the things that we have to look at is, is how we can sustain this grant over the next two years. And I think it's extremely important that we talk to, um, talk to our legislators, talk to, um, community groups, and hopefully we can continue this kind of treatment after, after they get out of the DIX Crisis Center. A lot of community groups, a lot of, uh, a lot of churches, a lot of civic groups actually do become peer, peer navigators. And a peer navigator is nothing more than somebody calling that person on a very regular basis and saying, "Do you need transportation to your, uh, to your counseling treatment? Do you need us to help you fill out a job application? Do you need us to help you find a home?" You know, when we talk about affordable housing and things like that. So, uh, while, while we're gonna be hiring or contracting with, uh, with Recovery International to do this two years, I think, I think one of the next steps is, um, that we start to talk about how we engage the community more in that process of, of beating that addiction. And I think that's what, that's gonna be the, you know, getting from the, from the back door to the next door, I gotta make sure I say that right, the back door to the next door of what their treatment is, is one step. How we sustain that and how we engage the community is gonna be another step. But, uh, but I think this is a good opportunity for us to, to be able to, uh, to try to bridge that gap, because it does take time to build, um, build those systems from a volunteer, um, religious, community focus. So I, I think it'll, it will take us some time to develop that.
At least it answers my question I've had. I've, you know, we've been supportive of the, uh, the Crisis Center, but always in the back of my mind was, what are we gonna do? What do we do next? We, you know, we, we may address the crisis, well, somebody in crisis, but unless they get follow-up treatment, we, we may have wasted our time for, for that individual. So I'm glad that we've got some plan, and this gives us, if we're successful, gives us a couple of years to, as you say, to, to work on, uh, formalizing something to, to where we continue that, those treatment options for those folks, so...
Yeah, I mean, one of the slides we talked about, uh, in, in countywide, they had about three hundred and fifty-five overdoses where Narcan was, uh, administered. About half of those were inside the city limits. So, um, it is, it is a real problem, and, you know, more folks died of opioid overdoses than traffic, uh, crashes, homicides, and suicides combined. So it's a, it's a real serious issue in our community, as it is in many communities across our country.
Let me clarify two points. I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, you had a question? Let's clarify two points. Uh, the grant itself, is it strictly a grant that the city will use, or will it be a grant that both the city and county can use?
Well, I think because of the lines, how the, the lines are blurred, we're gonna be partnering with the county, because, you know, people come into the city and they leave the city. About fifty percent of our police calls are people that don't live in our, in our, um, in our corporate limits, so it's gonna be very difficult for us to, to say, we're just gonna do city residents. The county residents, I think, are, are the ones, and by, by all means, we're not just talking about the folks that are coming out of the DIX Crisis Center. Also, these folks that are coming out of the hospital as well. So if, if they're medically, uh, detoxed, if they use some type of medical detox, when they come out, these peer navigators will be following those folks as well.
And again, there is no match required, and unlike some of the federal grants where after a certain period of time you are required to pick up the officers or pick up the program, there is no requirement. On the other hand, if we're successful, I believe that it's, uh, you know, as they say, truth in advertising, uh, you and the county commission will have to make a decision two years from now, do you continue this? We hope that because of the federal initiatives, which we think are coming out of this opioid lawsuit and the opioid crisis nationwide, that federal money will be coming to set up these type programs on a permanent basis with federal money. Reality is, until the check gets here, don't count on spending it. So the bottom line from a management standpoint is that you may be faced, two years from now, and the county commission may be faced two years from now, with a very successful program, and you have to make the tough financial call of, are we going to continue it? So we want to be upfront and say, there's no match, there's no requirement for you to continue the program, but if it's successful, don't be surprised if they're fun request. Do you agree with that, Mike?
Yes, sir.
We have a, uh, the group that oversaw the, the setup of the Crisis Center, I believe, are gonna be the same group that's gonna be monitoring the performance of, of the Crisis Centers, so...
Yes, and, and...
And so this will be coordinated with them.
Yes, sir. And one of the things that we, we have talked about is, is that group being the oversight for all that, all those kinds of grants. We've got another grant that we've partnered with the county for just mental health services, and that grant, uh, part of the requirements of that grant is that that committee have, uh, or the city-county task force have a, uh, regular updates as to what that grant is doing and, and how successful it is. And even in these pieces, we have a, uh, we have an evaluation piece with UNCW who's gonna come in and evaluate the program, uh, look at, look at our successes and, and try to see if we can modify it if we need to, see, see where the gaps in the services are. And I think, I think that, that next step will give us a lot of information over the next year as to where we need to be moving to, to help people that are, uh, addicted to these powerful narcotics.
I was just gonna say, I think my thought was along the line of what Richard brought out...
About 50% of our police calls are people that don't live in our, in our, in our corporate limits. So it's going to be very difficult for us to, to say, "We're just going to do city residents." The county residents, I think, are, are the ones. And by, by all means, we're not just talking about the folks that are coming out of the DIX Crisis Center. Also, those folks that are coming out of the hospital as well. So if, if they're medically detoxed, if they use some type of medical detox, when they come out, these peer navigators will be following those folks as well.
There is no match required. And unlike some of the federal grants where, after a certain period of time, you are required to pick up the officers or pick up the program, there is no requirement. On the other hand, if we are successful, I believe that it's, you know, as they say, truth in advertising, you and the county commission will have to make a decision two years from now, do you continue this? We hope that because of the federal initiatives, which we think are coming out of this opioid lawsuit and the opioid crisis nationwide, that federal money will be coming to set up these type programs on a permanent basis with federal money. Reality is, until the check gets here, don't count on spending it. So the bottom line from a management standpoint is that you may be faced, two years from now, and the county commission may be faced, two years from now, with a very successful program, and you have to make the tough financial call of, are we going to continue it? So we want to be upfront and say, there's no match, there's no requirement for you to continue the program, but if it's successful, don't be surprised if they're fun request. Do you agree with that, Mike?
Yes, sir.
We have a, the group that oversaw the, the setup of the Crisis Center, I believe, are going to be, the same group that's going to be monitoring the performance of, of the Crisis Centers.
Yes, and, and.
And so this will be coordinated with them.
Yes, sir. And one of the things that we, we have talked about is, is that group being the oversight for all that, all those kinds of grants. We've got another grant that we partnered with the county for just mental health services. And that grant, part of the requirements of that grant is that that committee have, or the city-county task force have a regular updates as to what that grant is doing and, and how successful it is. And even in these pieces, we have a, we have an evaluation piece with UNCW, who's going to come in and evaluate the program, look at, look at our successes, and, and try to see if we can modify it if we need to, see, see where the gaps in the services are. And I think, I think that, that next step will give us a lot of information over the next year as to where we need to be moving to, to help people that are addicted to these powerful narcotics.
I was just going to say, I think my thought was along the line, and what Richard brought up was that even though it is the city applying and receiving the grant, it is going to be a benefit for the community at large.
Yes.
And not just Onslow County, because this is a joint venture with Craven and Carteret. So it's, it's exactly what Mayor Protim emphasized when we began this, was the, the drop-off or where you, where you lose touch after the treatment, initial treatment. So hopefully, it sounds very, it's going to be strictly person, additional personnel for the provider that we've already chosen.
Yes, sir.
So it, it just sounds like a, a great augmentation to what hopefully is going to start soon.
Yeah, I mean, the, we've got some word that the voluntary commitments will start within the next week or two. The involuntary are, are still probably about a month away. Once, once the center is open and once we start getting folks in there, hopefully, this, this grant starts in January, and by January, we'll have some peer navigators that can help us with, with the program.
Thanks.
Counselor, you're being asked to consider the, allowing the, the public safety staff to apply for this grant for North Carolina Governor's Crime Commissions 2019 JAG grant and the opioid addiction program priority. So.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve them to apply for the grant.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Here, not all in favor, signify by a say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to number 13 on your agenda. This is the appointments to the ONWASA Board of Directors. And right now, we have Mayor Protim Michael Lazar, who is serving an existing three-year ONWASA term that expires July 31st, 2021. And Councilman Jerry Bittner's existing three-year ONWASA term expires July 31st, 2019. And we, by, Council, by the city code, we do this appointment every year. So at this time, I would entertain any recommendations as far as appointments, nominations.
I'll make the motion that we reappoint Mayor Protim Lazar and Councilman Bittner.
Yes, you go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No?
I recommend that the nominations be closed and the nominees be accepted by acclamation.
Okay. Have a second?
Just a second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by a say a aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have our two ONWASA members duly appointed. So that brings us to our reports section for the evening, I believe. And to the right place here. I'll start with.
Oh, we got public comment again.
Well, we didn't have anybody to start, so. Anybody want to speak at public comment, change your mind, want to talk? Okay. I didn't think so. So I'll start down on this end here with a council member, Warden.
Just proud to be here, Mr. Mayor.
And we're proud of having you here.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
I want to know your report.
Nothing from me. Dr. Woodruff?
Mr. Bittner asked if I would read a 35-minute, or a 35-minute.
Presentation, but.
You go right ahead and do that. Turn the lights off when you leave.
Yeah, he, he sent that to me, too. I, but I, yeah, I threw it where, I put it where it belongs, yes.
Well, his email didn't come through, so I assume he has none.
From the manager's standpoint, we would like to thank the mayor and council for the excellent work you did on the budget. As we know, you know, meeting every Tuesday for about three months, and it was not an easy budget this year, but we're certainly pleased that the public, we were able to adopt a budget that does not have a tax increase. It does have water and sewer increases, but no other increases in stormwater or any other commercial fees. Budgeting is going to become, every year, a more and more difficult situation as things continue to rise. But I do commend the mayor and council for the level of analysis that you gave in addressing the roughly $2 million issue that we had. I would remind you that as we move forward, we are now going to be taking a break after you have met for almost 10 weeks straight on the budget. You're now going to be taking the month of July off, and our next meeting will be on the 7th of August. That will be a Wednesday night meeting, because the Tuesday, the 6th, will be National Night Out. From the standpoint of the one-city moment, there are several that we would like to go through tonight. Sanitation crews and become fire rescue people, okay? Here are three sanitation people, Ben Williams, Robert Brill, and Bruce Simmons. Yesterday, they were out doing their normal work, and as they were collecting refuge, they noticed that from an elderly person's home, there was smoke. And so they went to investigate it, and they found that an electrical shortage was causing a grass fire and mulch fire. They were able to, to extinguish the fire and to alert the homeowner, and otherwise, that elderly citizen could have been in real trouble. But, you know, when you see city employees who are out there doing their work, and these are people who are on the task mission, that means that as quick as they finish, they get to go home. But these three people did the extra mile, and they're certainly to be commended. The second thing we'd like to talk a minute is the JPD Help Me Home Program. Many years ago, you may have remembered that with child abductions and so forth, the police departments around the country and here started fingerprinting so that you could identify children. But the Help Me Home Program is one that is specific to autism children. We're setting this up with JPD. This is a picture that has Officer Smith and Dr. Gilbert. They're shown here. And recently, they actually helped to locate and bring a young boy home safely. And so what we're doing is establishing a program where you'll be able to call. This is Sergeant Denise Peters. She's holding a form where if you have a child with some disability, some issues, you're welcome to contact JPD, the Jacksonville Police Department, and you will fill out this form. They will take necessary information, including things such as a picture, so that if a child does go missing for various reasons, it will assist the police department in finding that child. And of course, the motto of "Help me get back home." This is the website for the JPD. Now, June 14th, the summer concerts began in the park. And what you'll see on the next slide is we had a great turnout. This is, according to my notes, this is the 120 Minutes Band. Now, Mayor, I have no idea whether that means they play for 120 minutes or they've been practicing for 120 minutes, but this is the 120 Minute Band. And the next concert is going to be July the 12th, and the group is going to be in the fog. That's new-style bluegrass. So we understand it's going to be a clear day, but if you want to be in the fog, come out and hear some bluegrass music. Summer concerts, of course, held at the amphitheater, which is in the commons, right next to Richard Ray Park and right behind the Chevrolet dealer, miracle, I'm sorry, Marine Chevrolet. Recently, we were able to purchase some splash pad wheelchairs. You adopted a new ADA, that's Americans with Disability Act, plan, which we're beginning to implement. One of the items that you asked us to do was to try to make our parks more user-friendly and accessible to everyone. So these are, these are pictures of young people who have disabilities, but because they're now in this type of wheelchair, they can enjoy the splash pads along with many others.
Having a good time.
Today at 4:00, the mayor and council members gathered at the city cemetery to dedicate the Reflection Garden, which we call the Kovitch Reflection Garden. As you, many of you may know, Richard and Sarah Kovitch lived in this community for many, many years. And upon their passing, Mrs. Kovitch, in her estate, in her will, granted, directed, what's the right word, John? Assigned.
She left her whole estate to the city to put in a wrought iron fence.
Yes. She left her estate of roughly $200,000 with the express purpose of putting in a wrought iron fence. The old chain-link fence had been there for many, many years. It served well. It was time to replace it. These are the types of community gifts that we're not able to fund through our capital improvement program. We, I'll be quite frank with you, as a manager, with the things that we face, I would never have recommended to you spending the money that needed to be spent to put in the wrought iron fence. We may have put in a new chain-link fence, or we may have put in a aluminum fence, but because of Mrs. Kovitch's very kind donation, we were able to install this, as well as put in a new marker at the very corner there of Hargit and Johnson or 27, 24. Here you see our handsome mayor in the process with council members. You see Dr. Washington there. You can barely see Mr. Thomas hiding behind the pole. And of course, Mr. Warden is in his ball cap. But we had about 20 people come out for the, the dedication. And that truly exemplifies what Jacksonville is about, being a caring, caring community where we are truly one city. With that, we wish you a very good and enjoyable summer break. We look forward to seeing you in August.
Any words of wish for Mr. Pratt?
No, this time. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.